Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah.
Good morning, everybody. If I could, I'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Happy New Year, everyone. Madam Clerk, you can start.
No quote this morning?
I didn't know I was supposed to do that.
Okay, there are no scheduled appointments this morning. At the organizational section of the meeting, we need to elect the President of the Board for the year 2003.
As is customary for the Board of Commissioners, we rotate our presidency, so I will nominate Commissioner Bassi for President.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Gretchen Lee?
I'm not going to vote for this.
Right.
Thousand K's, I'm not held up.
I would, you might need it, Mary Jo. I would, you might need it.
There you go.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We need to elect the Vice President of the Board for the year 2003.
I'll nominate Betty.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to doubt the robust rules as parliamentary procedures to be followed at all Board meetings during the year 2003.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to provide the third Tuesday of each month at 9:30 a.m. for executive sessions or administrative briefings as needed, and Thursdays at 9:30 a.m. with the regular Board meeting days for 2003.
I think that's supposed to be administrative sessions, not executive sessions?
Ben?
Remember?
So executive session shouldn't be their administrative briefings, right?
Yeah.
I strike the word "executive" sessions.
Doesn't it sound like we're going in the back room?
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
The Commissioners, if you don't make an executive session, you won't be able to approve any of the daycare or childcare payments.
We don't do that anyway. You do it, don't you?
Yeah.
As a matter of when the Board's not meeting, I do, but if you meet, you may still want to do that.
Would you say to us again what you said? Remember, this is a new year now. Do you remember my talk?
No, I don't. Forget it, I'll take care of them.
So, I guess it's already in there, administrative briefing, so we just take out... You guys want... Do you guys want to keep the executive session in or not?
Well, I'd like to have the administrative briefings, and I'd like to do them on Tuesdays because I thought we could schedule some reports from different departments and agencies, and I'd have some ideas of who I'd like to start with. And I'd like to start with our...
Well, let's finish this up first. Are we going to do executive sessions or no? Do you want that in?
Have we done executive sessions on Tuesday in the past? Jerry, are you...
Well, you can go from your Board meeting into executive session.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we don't need to have that as part of it.
It's just, are you calling what you're doing on Tues... Are you going to conduct any official business at all on Tuesdays?
I don't think so.
But we would still like an open meeting.
Well, yeah, that's the administrative briefings.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could do some business.
Then, it's a meeting for the purpose of doing generally administrative briefings, but it will be an open meeting, and if you need to do special business that comes up, it will be appropriate to do that. If you then want to go into an executive session, you can just go into an executive session.
Madam Chairman, I move that Item Number Four, Reed, would provide the third Tuesday of each month at 9:30 a.m. for open meeting and administrative briefings as needed, and Thursday at 9:30 a.m. as regular Board meeting days for 2003.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Kenneth P. Carney as Sanitary Engineer for 2003.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
We have a contract with him. Was this necessary? I mean, is that a yearly contract we have?
Madam Clerk, do you know the length of that original resolution?
No, I have to pull it.
I thought it was for five years. Since I don't see any issue of compensation, I believe that this is probably not necessary. But I don't have the resolution in front of me, the original resolution.
Do you want to just hold this until next week?
Yeah, either way, Commissioner, I don't see a problem, so...
No, but if it's not necessary, why should we bother?
Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to do with the executive personnel, and Jerry has a matter of litigation. Why don't we just hold this, and we'll take a real quick look at that resolution while...
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Need to appoint a Commissioner as the 911 Review Board Chairman?
You volunteered last year, Commissioner Moore. Are you volunteering again this year?
I did.
Yes, you did.
In fact, you wanted this one.
Yeah, I would think I volunteered.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, sure.
Also move Commissioner Moore serve as 911 Board Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote for yourself, Mr. Moore.
I'll vote for myself.
Good for you.
I need every vote I'm going to get this year.
Okay, to authorize Commissioner Vassie and Commissioner Blair, the County Minister, Mr. Cortez, to utilize the county's law permit Visa credit card for the year 2003, and the amount to exceed $5,000 each. The expenditure are work-related to include the CCAO conferences, and for such items as food, lodging, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Okay, items under the regular Board business. Need to approve the job and family services bills repayment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Was there any transfers?
I think there was.
I heard there was supposed to be one transfer.
I thought there was one. Was there appropriation or transfer?
I heard there's four appropriations and one transfer.
Oh, that's what I heard this morning.
Can we look through all this, Jim?
No, it's fine. I mean, it doesn't really matter.
Was that one this morning considered a transfer?
That was an appropriation.
That was a reduction in appropriation.
I withdraw your motion.
Yes, thank you.
To withdraw, I withdraw.
Okay.
There are no advances in repayments, but I need to add appropriation for the next item.
Will you make a number 11, the appropriations?
Yes.
All right, I'll move for approval of the appropriations.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. On the requisitions, that's basically what all the departments are going to be requesting, correct? Are they on here?
For the most part, I would say the majority of the time, those are what they're requesting, but it's not always that way, Commissioner.
No, what I'm trying to... What I want to get at for this year is, since we kind of hastily, at the last minute, approved our budget for last year, I don't think every department that submitted their original budget knows that they got cut, or are they aware of it, John?
No, they are aware of it.
Did you send them what you cut back to the departments, that each one applied and said this is how much your actual budgets are?
We called the departments, and we told them which accounts were cut.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, so how are we going to know... Okay, so when you come through with the requisition, this is all going to be within their budgets then, correct?
What happens with the requisitions, when they come up with purchasing, they go to budgeting to make sure there's funds available to pay. There's enough funds available to pay, it doesn't get to the Commissioners.
Are the funds all... But the funds, my understanding is, like, let's use somebody as an example, I hate doing that.
Why don't you use ours?
No, well, we could use the Commissioners, but it's all... Do we have them all identified for a column?
Yes.
Okay, so how easy would it be after the first 90 days to give me a report that shows what the percentage is for each department, not one under the Commissioners, but the whole county as a whole, to say, here's where the Sheriff's Department is as a percentage of budget? So if their budget... Because if we're at a $48 million revenue budget, I don't want to get to the pennies, and we see in the first quarter that they're up or over, then you should be able to tell us why, and maybe it's because they spend most of their money in that part of the season or what have you.
Okay.
But I want to be able to see that. I don't want to wait until December to find out like what happened here where we have to pass a resolution because we don't have enough money in payroll.
I agree totally, especially with the 25 percent cuts, Commissioners, some of the line item accounts. I think it behoves us even more now.
Well, no, because I think we're going to have to spend some money anyway above and beyond what's in the budget, I believe, you know?
I do, too.
But I want to make sure that we... I'd like to see us not do it, but I'd like to at least see where everyone's at on their budget on a quarterly basis, and is that going to be difficult to do?
I don't think so. Initially, it'll be manually done, but that won't take long, and then we'll put it on the computer. So once we get that up on the system, it will be...
Okay, because you do give us a monthly report on the revenue.
And we've been working with Ernest Smith on...
Right, but I would like to see where the whole county, since we vote on it on an annual basis, I'd at least like to see how everybody's doing with those reports or with those accounts.
And percentage of budget consumed.
Right, right.
Sure, I will gladly do that with my staff.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Is that similar to what you're doing now with the monthly reports, John, or what we would call a red flag?
Yeah, those... Yes, Commissioner, those reports you get monthly are on a mackerel basis, where we give the Commissioners and the County Administrator and Human Resource Director overall numbers by line item account, but I think what Commissioner Moore is looking at is more detailed items by department, very specific line items, and we can do that.
That's good.
Mm-hmm. So when they come up for our votes up here, then they're always going to be within the budget that we passed in December, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And the departments have to watch that, too, if they're within the budget.
Right.
Okay, thank you. How's it for my question?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approving bills repayment?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Commissioners, Item Number 15, we need to approve a change order number three in the amount of $1,278 to T.H. Martin Duct Systems Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Lorraine County Jail Systems and Equipment Alterations Project. The change order is for the following, for the shower area water supply connections. This is to provide additional plumbing labor and materials to add a minimum one and a quarter inch cold water and three-quarter inch hot water branch valves on tie-in to existing water supply lines. This is to eliminate the offset in one-half inch hot water return piping for clearance to new ceiling construction, and to modify the connection to the shower area roof drain. This will be to modify the existing roof drain leader elbow for clearance with respect to ceiling insulation and chase masonry on the Lorraine County Jail Systems and Equipment Alterations Project, and that tolls $1,278. Lorraine County Sheriff has reviewed and recommends approval. It authorizes the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Sheriff, is there some reason the architect didn't plan these, the original plan?
Happy New Year. This was something that was discovered as they went along, you know? This was discussed with the project manager, County Administrator Jim Cortez is aware of them. These were above and beyond the norm changes, and the prices are within range that they thought were reasonable.
Commissioner, these prices started about triple this, and we worked with them and ratcheted this down. The valves in the water were absolutely necessary because we had some... We didn't have the ability to cut off the flow, too. That was a...
That's correct.
That was a problem out there. So one of these is actually an enhancement to the job that we need out there to be able to better manage the maintenance on the shower area, so it was necessary to get that change order. The one with the drain, with the roof clearance, that was an unidentified situation because it wasn't visually able to be seen until they got up there and started working up there. So we're very confident that these things couldn't have been taken into consideration beforehand. You know how we feel about change orders, and how you feel about change orders.
Yeah, that's why I wonder sometimes the architects should foresee these things and put them in the plan instead of giving us change orders all the time.
These definitely could not have been...
Foreseeing.
And I agree with you on that, Commissioner, and with the County Administrator, too. He knows that we... My maintenance staff and I stay on top of these change orders because I know exactly how you can say you can just keep adding one of these, and that's definitely not what none of us want.
They come in with a low bid, and then by the time they're done, they're higher than...
Right, we definitely watch that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to approve an enter-and-to agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Maximus Incorporated of Concord Township, Ohio, to prepare the indirect cost allocation plan for 2003 based on the study for 2002. This agreement is in the amount of $17,000, including expenses.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to authorize salary adjustments for the following Lorraine Municipal Court personnel. Judge Mark Mihawk, Administrative Judge for 2003, is entitled to an additional $1,500. So the total annual salary would be $102,600. The state share, $39,350. The city's three-fish share equals $37,950. And the county's two-fish share equals $25,300. This will increase the bi-weekly rate from $950 to $973.07, and for Judge Gus Nunez, the presiding judge for 2003, total annual salary $101,100. State share equals $39,350. City share, $37,050. The county's two-fish share, $24,700. This will decrease the bi-weekly rate from $973.07 to $950.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I understand, Item Number 18, I was done on a requisition, and I apologize, I wasn't aware of that.
Number 18?
My type of agenda.
Yeah, I thought we had routed that and that it was agreed upon, but I wasn't sure that a B.O. had come through. Avon, the B.O. did come through?
Yeah.
I have a copy.
Given to us, yeah, at the end of the year.
Sorry.
I didn't know we had completed that either, thank you.
I have Number 19, I'd like to approve change order number one to Class Brothers Pavilion of Alariah, Ohio, for a credit in the amount of $8,747.69 due to contingency items that were not required to be incorporated into the Murray Ridge School Alariah Workshop Drainage Improvement Project. MRDD has reviewed and approved this change order. I'd like to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Just authorize the President, Vice President, and Member in their absence, County Administrator, to execute all contracts and agreements on behalf of the Board for the year 2003.
So moved.
I would second, but I'm not in favor of delegating our responsibilities to the Administrator, no offense, Jim, but I feel it's our responsibility as elected officials, and reliability falls on us in the end, anyway.
Recognizing that this is not to execute a contract with no resolution, the resolution after you pass this is simple signature to complete the paperwork, it'd have to be a resolution passed by this Board and attached to the contract, so this is merely pre-functionary. So if that's the pleasure of the Board, that's simply fine.
We've gotten a little better. We used to have all three Commissioners sign all documents, and after we've passed them and discussed them, I think one signature's sufficient, and I really don't care whose it is, as long as it's one of these authorized people.
All right, and without a resolution, we can't execute a contract. This is, like I said, this is just completing the paperwork.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye, but I still not for the County Administrator to sign it. I think it's our responsibility.
Mr. Moore?
No.
So what are just going to be our requirements? I guess the resolution reads that...
It passed.
Well, no, it didn't, because the County Administrator's signature only had one vote, so I guess what it means is any Commissioner can sign. Is that right? Is that your understanding?
Well, we're both in agreement for either the President and the Board or the Vice President.
A member also.
I'm the member. I'm a member this year.
It's a nice place to be.
Well...
So that either member of the Board is authorized to sign contracts or agreements. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Number 21, we'd authorize the annual compensation for law directors prosecuting violations of state law in municipal court. Ohio Vice Code Section 1901.34(c) for the year 2003 for jurisdictions as follows. For Lorraine, Alariah, Oberlin, $10,000 each. North Ridgeville and Amherst, $7,500 each. Avon Lake, Avon, Sheffield Village and Sheffield Lake, $5,000 each. South Amherst and Wellington, $2,000 each. Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermillion, and La Grange, $1,000 each. Pursuant to Resolution Number 99-973, attorneys who elect to receive payment directly will be compensated in the amount 10 percent lower than the amounts herein authorized. Said reductions reflect additional costs being borne by the county.
And this... The terms of this resolution were negotiated by the Assistant County Prosecutor several years ago. Is that correct, Jerry?
Yes, Commissioner. We just have to continue to renew it on an annual basis.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd like to approve payment to the victims of domestic violence as Lorraine County Safe Harbor Incorporated doing business at Genesis House in the amount of $37,364 as collected by Lorraine County pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 3113.39 for the period of July 1, 2002 through December 31, 2002.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd like to reestablish incarceration fees within Lorraine County for housing municipal ordinance inmates from $65 per diem to $75 per diem affected February 1, 2003. It authorizes the prosecutor's office to prepare new contracts between the Lorraine County Sheriff and the various participating municipalities.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Does this let us cover the cost of incarcerating a prisoner at this time?
Probably not. The data that I'm relying upon is about two years old. This is part of the strategy the Board incrementally has been moving this rate up. Had it on my docket to be reviewed annually at the beginning of each year until we got to the 75 that was where we were two years ago. For next year, I'll be meeting with the Sheriff's folks, and we'll talk about gaining a cost at that point to see what respect to January 2004.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, Number 24, I'd authorize the amendment to the Trimline Die Corporation Enterprise Zone Agreement with the Village of La Grange, Ohio, due to an assignment of contract based on the request of Barbarous LLC and declaring this an emergency. Barbarous LLC has entered into an asset purchase agreement with DGR Investments Limited, Barbarous Corporation, and Trimline Die Corporation. Barbarous LLC now owns all real estate assets and employees of Trimline Die Corporation. Trimline Die Corporation will continue as the operating company. Enterprise Zone Agreement Number 209-96-01 for Trimline Die Corporation shall be amended to reflect the new asset owner of Barbarous LLC.
Commissioners, before we move out, I think we can strike the declaring of emergency. That's from a municipal ordinance. We got this from the city. They need that to waive their three readings. You don't require that here.
So we've stricken and declaring this an emergency on line one, two, on line three, ending on line four. Period after LLC. So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd like to approve it enter into revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development for the term of three years beginning February 1, 2003 and authorize the president to execute on behalf of the board.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Question. I looked at this agreement, it doesn't, there's no dollar amount in here. Is this, why are we doing this?
The dollar amount is what we have in our revolving loan fund.
No, but I mean, why are we entering into a new agreement? Did the old one expire?
Yes.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi. And I would just suggest, Roxanne, update, you're authorized the president to execute on behalf of the board on his authorized signature, however you want to say it, because by the resolution we just passed, we've authorized any one of the three of us to sign.
Okay. Thank you.
See, I don't think she needs to put anything there. Once you pass the resolution authorizing any of the three, you require something special, Mr. Twining?
We don't, but the State of Ohio does. They changed their regulations last year, they will only accept the president's signature.
Oh, wow, thanks for that bit of information. And I guess we need the president to sign. Sorry.
It's okay.
I have a better suggestion than, only include that when the president has to sign it. Otherwise, we're all set.
Okay.
Okay?
Commissioner, excuse me, but for the council business, it's also a single age.
Well, she can include that in the, okay? We're getting better every day. Thanks, Lon.
Under Telecommunications Department, number 26, we'd authorize the replacement of the current 24 analog PBX trunks and 12 analog DID trunks with a 24-channel PRI circuit. Nancy Bryant, telecommunications supervisor, is recommending this replacement because the reliability of digital trucking versus analog and the dead air we have been experiencing and the intermittent outages on the analog trunks, plus this will be a substantial savings for the county. Quotes are received and all tell Valeria will install for $1,245 and Sisborne of Akron will perform the software configuration in the sum of $350. This new service will cost $935.97 per month for a 60-month agreement, which will result in a total annual savings of $20,291.40.
So move.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Under Solid Waste Management District, number 27, we need to extend the contract with Heritage Environmental Incorporated from Toledo, Ohio, to administer a one-day household hazardous waste day for one year, expiring December 31, 2003. This is the last year for option to renew contract and this will be need to be advertised for bids in 2004.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I talked with Dan in regards to this issue and Dan informed me that we have two other companies within the county that deal with hazardous waste and I personally think that we should go out for bids again and give these people an opportunity to bid on this. I'd like to see a county, company do the jobs. Can we do that, Dan?
Dan Billman, Solid Waste Director. In answer to your question, Commissioner, the Ross Environmental is one and although they've had opportunities in the past to bid on the project, they have not done that. That's not their bailiwick. They're more into industrial than into what we're doing with the HSW day. The other entity in Avon, they do do it, but I don't think I've ever seen them participate in our bidding process, but I would recommend that next year after this process takes place, that we still send them bids and give them the opportunity to.
Have we had anyone go out and talk with them to encourage them to bid on this or to find out what the problem is, why they're not bidding?
Two years ago, I don't recall the direct conversation I had with them, but I did talk to them and nothing came of it. But I can do so in the next, you know, within the next year after we do this contract here, we could do that.
Maybe you could find out why they're not bidding if there's, you know, if there's good reason for it, maybe we can assist them.
I can do that.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Under Children's Services, number 28, we'd authorize various personnel in the Children's Services Department to utilize their Shell Oil Gasoline credit cards along with the agency's Master Card for the year 2003 in the amount not to exceed $200 and $2,500 respectively, and all the personnel will be listed in the resolution.
So move.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Under the County Engineer, number 29, we'd authorize Lorain County Engineer to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation and State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 5513.01b. This will permit the engineer to purchase traffic signal lamps, traffic marking paint, glass beams, dump truck cap and chassis and other items as needed. Authorization is effective January 13, 2003, expiring January 12, 2004.
So move.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Under the Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, number 30, we'd request the county auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.03 certify to the Board of Commissioners the total current tax valuation of Lorain County and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 1.6875 mils for the purpose of a mental retardation and developmental disabilities levy under Ohio Revised Code Sections 5705.19 and 5705.222. This levy will be a five-year renewal levy and will be placed on the bill at the May 6, 2003 election.
And this is to request the auditor to establish the current tax valuation? This is the first step in taking action to place this on the ballot? Is that correct?
Yes, that's now required by law, Commissioner.
Also move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Well, I would just like, John, would you explain for the public's edification what the difference is between a renewal and a replacement? This one, this particular one is a renewal, but we have had replacements, so people aren't confused when they go to vote.
Okay.
Good morning, John. So I'll do my best. A renewal would mean a levy is renewed, generating the same amount of money that would have been generated under the existing levy. A replacement means the proceeds of the levy will rise with construction values in new homes.
What about existing homes?
Right. So renewal will generate, I think the important thing is the renewal will generate the same amount of money.
On existing or with the, if the appraisals change on existing property, then a renewal will also increase the levy? Is that correct?
Basically, with the replacement levy and the difference between replacement and renewal levy, renewals are basically continuation of an addition or an existing levy that's been out there on the tax rolls for a number of years and it's not really additional taxes, it's just a continuation on with the effective rates continuing on. With a replacement, really you're getting a full collection. So on this 1.6875, you will get that based on, there'll be a full collection. Now, if it's a renewal, the effective rate may be less than the 1.6875. So there would be a slight bump in taxes for a replacement levy and renewals are just a continuation on.
Commissioner, to further answer your question, if the housing values went down, they would have to go down to what the value was of when the levy was placed on five years ago before you affected.
Right, basically, it's a guaranteed collection of X amount of dollars.
The theoretically, you know, hypothetically, if you, if they went down that low, then you probably would collect less money because it's on the valuation at the time. Most people's housing properties go, values go up over a period of years, but the income is still on the assessed value of when the levies pass.
It's basically as values rise, the effective rate goes down. It's inverse relation.
Commissioner, base's question though was if values went down.
No, no, if the value of the property changes, I just want to make it clear to the public that if they have an existing piece of property that is not new construction and if the value goes up when we have new appraisals, will these people pay more than?
Again, that depends on the total valuation. Again, a levy is only supposed to bring in X amount of dollars and if the valuations do rise, again, that could be spread out throughout, so you really could almost sometimes see an actual decrease in taxes. And again, it's not an exact science, but that's a possibility.
Okay. Is there anyone here that has any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Reports, comments, Mr. Cordez, administration?
Commissioners, I'm going to pass you a resolution authorizing an allocation to the Soil and Water Conservation District. They're asking for their allocation of $101,421 to be transferred to them. We were looking at doing allocations in one-twelfth increments this year and we're going to do some of those that way. Soil and Water's a little bit different. They don't get their state money until after July 1. They usually live on county money the first six months and then they live on state money the next six months, plus they need our money for matching to get grant money. Mr. Ocasin Company has talked to them extensively and I'm comfortable that we need to make that transfer now, plus that money will be in a special revenue fund which return the interest to the county. So I want to take the Budget Department for getting clarity on that issue for us, but we need to make that appropriation.
And then we get reimbursed?
No.
This is an advance?
Not an advance. This is what we give them every year, so it's not an advance or a repayment.
Okay, so we just don't advance them until they collect from the state? Is there a time that we?
This is a direct infusion of cash to Soil and Water Conservation District. There's no recovery of these funds. They use it to match for grant money that they retain, but we don't get, we don't get repaid this money.
Okay, and how much is it? $101,421 and you say this goes into a special revenue account so that we will continue to generate the interest?
Yes, and this is, this is.
Is that the way it's been in the past?
Yes, and this is within the budget, it was in the budget, so this is not outside the budget that you passed in December.
Oh, I was curious, so it goes into a special revenue account, so we still continue to draw the interest on that?
That's correct, yes. The interest is credited to County General Fund.
All right, so you want a resolution to approve the annual general fund allocation of $101,421 to be utilized by Lorain Soil and Water Conservation District to secure state grant monies? Also move.
Any more discussion?
I really liked that letter that you sent too about one-twelfth and now you've changed because you found out the difference.
Well, Commissioner, we continue to try to find ways of retaining some of the funds that we send outside the county government. We're looking at only giving them the absolute minimum that they need.
I think that's great.
To survive on so we can retain it here to get some interest money in these lean times, we're just trying to be creative.
It was very good, I wrote on it.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
At our last meeting, the Commissioners asked that I take a look at the revised code
with respect to purchasing equipment for the Humane Society. I've done so. I said I would report back this meeting and I have the information here. Basically, summing up several portions of the code and it does state that the Board of Commissioners may, at the end of each year, make a yearly appropriation to the county Humane Society for the general fund, from the general fund of the county if such funds that the Board deems reasonable. I don't know what specifically means that you can purchase a piece of equipment or not. It does mean, it does say that you can give them, at the end of the year, appropriation. I'll leave that few, there's several other things attached here. Also, I'd like to point out that we received another letter back from the attorney wishing to represent the Humane Society with respect to legal fees. I'll be routing that to the Board and I think you should take a little time and take a look at that. Looks like we're going to be incurring some potential costs there, so I'll be putting a router on that to the Board also.
So does that mean that we would have to pay for this attorney or is it the responsibility of the agency?
Well, Mr. Ennis wrote a very creative letter to their attorney and their attorney wrote a very creative letter back to us. So I think the issue is still a little bit up in the air, but I want to put a router on this, give you some use on this and discuss it with you, but as it looks right now, we may be incurring some costs there. So I caution the Board that we should take that in consideration when we do any appropriation or allocation of funds. And once we get, the code doesn't specifically say we can buy equipment, it says that we can make an appropriation to the Humane Society if we deem it necessary and reasonable, if we want to, or you want to, excuse me. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Assistant County Prosecutor, stand.
I would like to meet with Commissioners in Executive Session on a matter of pending litigation.
Commissioners' report?
Commissioner Blair?
I have no report, thank you.
Have none.
I have some things that I'd like to discuss, for us to discuss. First of all, I was thinking about scheduling about four meetings this year in different parts of the county for community involvement and comments. Your thoughts?
Before that, what I would suggest though is find out what areas you're looking to, if we're going to go into Avon, I look at the four areas like Lorain, Avon, the townships and I'd ask them if they'd like to have us attend and see if, that's what I would prefer to see in writing where the township trustees mean that they have, see if they'd like to have us have a public hearing at their, because it's their meeting, I don't want to be accused of stepping on people's toes and walking into their areas, so if you would like to pursue the matter, I'd like to see what the input would be from the communities you're looking to hold those meetings.
I was thinking four different corners of the county and the same thing as you were thinking is to possibly talk to the township trustees or a mayor in each area and see if we could use their facility to hold these meetings.
See if they'd like to have us come first, see if, we don't want to just crash a party and see if we're invited first.
Exactly. All right, I'll look into that and then I'll let you know what they decide. And then we talked about having our administrative meetings on Tuesday.
The third Tuesdays?
The third Tuesday. Well, next month is, or no, January, the 27th would be the fourth Tuesday, because I believe the Tuesday before that we're off, the building is closed. I'm thinking.
We're off next month.
It's on Monday, I'm okay there.
All right, what about?
Third Tuesday would be next Tuesday.
Twenty-first?
Are we open? Is the building open?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're closing.
All right, I'd like to schedule our first meeting with Bob Donegan, the county health insurance consultant, and he's with the firm of, the Brent Firm, the Brant Firm, and I'd like some discussion in regards to our county health plan. Would you both be available for that?
I don't know, I'll have to check for me, so.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll set up a schedule and then.
I'd appreciate that.
Include, you know, the plan for whatever agency or department that we would be asking to come in and some of what we would be discussing maybe, and then I'll hand pass that on to you. I do want to report that the campaign for the R-X Pricing Act, the petition was successful and that's to reduce the prescription drug costs. They needed, they delivered 143,031 signatures and what they actually needed was 96,870, so they did real good, but of course, the drug companies are going to fight it and they've already started and they're trying to stop it. Another thing too is on the correspondence, we had a letter from the Recorder's Office commending Rick Reiman and his crew for doing an excellent job in preparing the wiring for the installation for some of their computer equipment and I think we should recognize these people and different employees periodically when we get letters such as this. I don't know what your thoughts are, but maybe prepare a certificate when we get a letter from another department commending our people.
Usually the letters are just, are usually all you need. If you get an attaboy letter, that's what you usually want to copy, the attaboy letter, so.
And they like it when it goes into their personnel files.
Exactly.
Well, I just thought maybe a certificate for them to hang on the wall would be something added to their confidence.
That's fine. We do those all the time.
I don't think our employees know.
I think that's up to each individual Commissioner. I think if you just type them up and pass them around, that's what I usually end up with them. I think I, there's a whole pile here that.
So you're in agreement?
I'm in agreement as long as it comes by. I mean, we've had them come by and sometimes I haven't signed them, sometimes I have.
Okay, that's all I have.
Is there any whole business?
None here.
I have no alt, I have no new.
Before you go further, while we were waiting for the camera to be set up, I thought I heard that you wanted to talk about personnel issues in your exec two. So you may want to modify, Jerry wants to go in for litigation, but you may also want to state that we're going to go in for potential new hires under, permissive discussion under the sunshine law.
I don't think we made that motion yet though, have we?
No, we're going to.
Jerry, I just wanted to make sure we didn't.
Okay.
New business?
I have none.
None?
Well, I'm moved to go into executive session in regards to potential new hires and litigation. I, yeah, because we didn't do that with Jerry.
One second.
Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
On to the first.
I thought, oh, we're not going into exec.
We're out of order.
We'll announce this later.
Well, we can get the board business out of the way and then go into executive session.
Moved away.
Second.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Is there anyone here that would like to approach the Board? Comments, questions? Please come up to the mic and state your name.
My name's Patricia Stracker and I'm here to hopefully encourage you in making an informed decision regarding the Humane Society and their request for funds to purchase a net gun. I want, I have here in front of me 35 reports from the humane officer who is a volunteer. Each one of the reports indicates that a state, city or, a state, city or county funded agency requested his assistance and he did in fact assist. He has approximately 38 other calls for dogs at large where he didn't file a report because it didn't result in the capture of the animal. Mitch Witherall, even the sheriff that we're dealing with in the past week, did not know that he is a volunteer. He thought he was paid by the county. This is a service provided to the county that is valuable and can't be duplicated by the employees of the dog pound. They're not there all the time, they don't have the authority to file animal cruelty charges. It's my understanding too that the Board may need some information regarding how animal cruelty and human violence are connected. So when you cap, when you get somebody for animal cruelty, hopefully you're preventing further expense on the county for human services, spousal abuse, child abuse, child neglect, spouse neglect, all of those things. Mitch Witherall handles not just dogs, he does wildlife and any other farm animals, you name it, he will respond to the call in any city in the county. There are multiple man-hours that are spent when you have a fire department, five sheriffs and a humane officer going after a pig. A sheriff got injured and spent a time off work. That's an expense to the county, probably would pay for itself in one purchase of a net gun. The Humane Society is not asking for an annual donation, they're asking for funds to purchase net gun that would benefit the county. This, this net gun is harmless animals, it would prevent auto accidents which are, could potentially be, cause human life, cost to the county in man-hours and whatnot. The sheriff, the sheriff's department calls Mr. Witherall almost exclusively now because as it's stated in a lot of these reports, the APL and the county dog pound refuse to answer these calls. I also want to sort of make it clear that the issue of paying for a special prosecutor and the issue of a net gun are completely separate, they are not together. It's something that's in the Ohio Revised Code, they're two separate issues in the code. code, they're two separate issues here. The issue of the county prosecutor, or the special prosecutor, was actually suggested by Dave Mengke, who is a city prosecutor, or county prosecutor. He recommended that Jeff Holland be appointed a special prosecutor because he didn't have the time or the resources to handle animal cruelty cases. I just hope that you inform yourself, this is much more serious than just $4,000 to a humane society. This county is a horrific place for animals, as I'm sure you're aware, what's, what's happening at the dog pound right now as we speak. This is an important issue, and I encourage you to make an informed decision and not a rush to judgment. Thank you for your time.
That won't be quite as eloquent as the person that processed me, but my wife and I, we rescued Dalmatians, and we've had a female that's been running out for, going on eight weeks, or actually a little over eight weeks. And in that time, we've had the, I guess, the pleasure of having met Mitch, and he's worked with us, and we've called him up at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. Last week, we had a sighting. We've, between my wife and I, we've spent literally over 100 hours looking for this dog. We've been within 30 or 40 feet of her a couple of times, she's running scared. We've tried live traps, we've tried tracking her down with Quadra, I mean, if, if you name it, we've tried it. And more or less, I'm just here to thank Mitch and to say to him that anything that we can do to help him get the tools that he needs to do his job, and I didn't know he was an unpaid employee either, and I'm really amazed here, that if we were to go to you and try and take your computers away from you, or give you the tools that, or not give you the tools that you need to do your job, whether it's a volunteer job or a paid job, anything that you guys can do to, to help him do the things that he's trying to do to help the people of your, your county would be much appreciated.
Sir, would you please state your name?
I'm Todd Weeden, T-O-D-D-W-E-E-D-E-N, and our, my wife and I run Dots, Dalmatians off the street, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't know if I can top all that, but as you see, I'm really here because my heart's in this. I do service the county anytime, day or night, 24 hours a day. I do do it for free. I'm not asking you to pay me, and by the purchase of this, it's going to benefit everybody. I hope you see that. This is not for me to profit. I can't go out and use this item to profit in any way. This is strictly because this is what I believe in. That's it.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm David Ashenhurst of Overland. Happy New Year to you all. I actually have a question for, for the Commissioners or for Mr. Ennis before I say what I'm going to. Do we have a charter in this county? We do not, thank you. I am here to make a suggestion for 2003, and I would memorialize it in the form of a letter to the Board as well, but I sort of hope I don't have to, because I hope the Board memorializes it in some way that I can react to, in the sense that I don't want to tell you too much about this, because I'd like to bid on the contract when I think you do it. I suggest that we take advantage of the bicentennial year to recognize that the form of county government in Ohio is also having its bicentennial, and that we were actually a part, before there was Lorain County, we were still part of a county, and that the bicentennial we have this year is not of the land, but it's of the idea of the state of Ohio and the form of government that it's put together. So my suggestion is that by some means or other, the county undertake to issue for 2003 a bicentennial edition of the County Offices and Services Guide, which I think is an excellent description of some of the interactions, but not all of them, of Lorain County. A bicentennial edition that also includes no Lorain County government, which isn't really published as a regular item by the League of Women Voters of Lorain County anymore, but also has information about the county that seems still relevant, because despite the fact that it hasn't been published since 1976, when you ask for the yellow book at the desk, you get a, a unedited copy of what was put out in 1976 that's, that's greatly updated. And perhaps that the, that the bicentennial edition of this guide also include relevant portions of the People's Annual Financial Report, which also provides a great deal of information about the county and the way different pieces of the county relate to it, perhaps of the Lorain County map, and perhaps of 2000 census information concerning Lorain County, which is very hard to come by in other places, and sort of not under the auspices of the county in any easily digestible form. I suggest that this also be used as a basis for a bicentennial edition of the Lorain County website, such that people looking at the website for Lorain County get a good set of links to governments that exist under the auspices of Lorain County at the municipal level and the township level, and that good links exist to the state government and the state government's website where these, where there are linkages, that you don't have linkages to non-governmental entities, but that you allow web addresses to be put in that, that link these things up. But it seems to me that it's very hard to understand, and I think the Commissioner's done a very good job of trying to present information on how these different governments and, and Boards work together, and to whom their allegiances are, and responsibilities are drawn from one place to the other. And I just think that 2003, with the bicentennial year starting sometime later, like March 1st, and also with the Justice Center being completed sometime at the end of it, when this guidebook, I hope, will still be a useful tool, that this would be a good time to kind of put all those things together, consolidate it, and put out a really bang-up guide to Lorain County and what it is and how it operates. And as I say, I would like to bid on this contract, so I don't want to give you any more details on it until you say kind of what you want. But I think, whether it's done inside or outside, I really suggest that this be the occasion for doing something like that. Thank you.
It's a good idea.
Just for clarification purposes, we're doing a great job, but we're not going to open the Justice Center until 2003, so I just don't want anybody to panic out there.
At the end of the bicentennial year, in, in the spring of 2004, summer of 2004...
Summer 2004, I just want to, you know, maintain a posture that that's when we're going to open the Justice Center. I appreciate your confidence, David.
No, I understand. I just mean that it seems to me a lot's going to happen in the next 18 months that are very good for the progress of Lorain County.
We will be approaching the Commissioners within the next two to three Board meetings with the budget for the state bicentennial, as you know, with the bell casting and the events that we have prepared. We met, this is kind of a good segue, we met with the, the state folks last week for a few hours and went over some issues, so you'll be seeing a lot of information concerning that, and at that time, if the Board wants to do some additional things, we can incorporate those all together. I wasn't aware that it was the county's bicentennial, though.
Well, I'm just saying it's the Ohio County, the, the form of government that a county...
Okay, because one of the things we did when we were looking at this to see when Lorain's bicentennial would be, but you're talking about the actual statute that allows county government.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, and I was looking in the, in the Ohio Constitution to understand to what extent the county is a district of the state rather than a municipal corporation, but if we had a charter...
Right, we are not, we're not a product of the Constitution of the state, but rather of the legislative body. We exist at the pleasure of the legislative body of the state, which is a part of the Constitution of the state.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Learn something new every day, Dave.
Dave, were you talking about incorporating those into our county directory? Some of your, like the map and some other ideas that you had there?
Yeah, one county directory that does all these things at once, so we don't have five or one of, what's in here and what's in there.
Well, some of those other ideas that you had to incorporate in there, other than the map and whatever else you had there, if you'll give those to Kathy, and the next time we update that, usually Kathy, if you updated, or my administrative assistant usually updates it. Maybe we could incorporate...
I don't think that's what Dave is looking for.
I understand what Dave is looking for, but usually we do it in-house.
No, I understand.
So if you will give some of those ideas you have to Kathy, I'm sure we can incorporate some of those. And we also print them over here, too.
I understand that.
Okay.
But as I say, you're printing several different things now, and I'm just suggesting that at some point, whether, whether by inside or with some advice from the outside, you make one.
Well, we need to know what information the public needs that we're not giving, and I think you had some good suggestions there. Appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we just plug you forward.
Move into exec?
We already did.
We did.
We did, so do we just? Okay.